Appropriate. They have the setbacks, they have everything they need, which would be department of health approval in a heartbeat. But yeah, I presume that once the streets are opened up in the village of Cold Spring, to install sewer lines, that the issues of the water lines will become quickly apparent.
You already have a fair number of your residents on the village water.
Oh, yeah. No, as I mentioned, Marie, it's the outlining areas like Upper Riley, Healy, Moffitt, Barmill, Billy's Way.
Wood Avenue, I don't think Wood Avenue has a lot.
I think part of Wood Avenue is on the water system.
Right, okay. Bill, just one question. When sewers went in in the village, each homeowner had to pay for the connection from their home to the village. Is that going to be the...
Going in, that is the assumption, yes. Unless there's some opportunity for subsidization there, it's going to be on the dime of a homeowner.
And as part of that, at that time, every homeowner began to be assessed sewer fee, regardless of whether or not they hooked up.
Yes.
So we would look for, as you said, we'll both be in the ground before this happens. But I would think that that should be the working assumption.
Absolutely. And I know of a few incidents within the village of Cold Spring that up until about perhaps 15 years ago, some homes were not, never hooked up.
None of them was?
Really. I know up in Orchard Street, there was at least one home there I was aware of. But I think, you know, Marie, I'm a realist, I believe. You know, there may be a backlash from citizens in the Nelsonville. It's no way, no how. But at least we have to take those steps to explore it and provide facts rather than Armageddon. So I'll keep the village here apprised as we take it step by step. I'll be interviewing two engineering firms if you would like to participate in that process. Perhaps not immediately. I would at least like, I have confidence in these two firms. But it all comes down to sometimes the people involved, the personalities involved. There has to be a simpatico, if you will. But if you are so inclined, as I look at those two firms, I'll hand them off to say...
That'd be great.
Yeah, would that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Bill, one other thing. Fran and I serendipously attended a seminar today at Mayor's.
Oh, really?
On water, clean water.
Uh-huh.
And it was wastewater and regular water.
Right.
And it was hosted by Sina Hudson.
Right, I saw the ad on that one. I couldn't attend, unfortunately.
And the EFC.
Yeah.
And the EFC person, Sabrina T. T, right, right, T. Just kept reemphasizing how IMAs just bump your points up like crazy.
Right.
That the EFC is just super anxious to work with municipalities. Call me, call me, call me. That was her mantra.
That's why I had her card.
Yes, Fran has her card.
And she did very specifically say, if you're looking at an IMA, they need to, before they do anything, they need to know that we've worked out every step of every piece of it. Who's responsible for what, who's paying what, who's making which decision and where. So it has to be all very, very clearly set up.
Yes, indeed.
So that's a legal step that comes.
And I agree on that. I think the date for application, the deadline for applications is end of July next year.
She further, you've got to have your secret done.
Yeah.
You've got to have your resolution. I mean, you've got to breathe pretty far down the path before you can consider applying.
Yeah, exactly.
So maybe a couple of years down the line. But she also said, and I asked her, if we invited her, would she come and speak with us? And just sort of, if we have a plan in our mind. And she said, if you have anything in mind, give it out to us.
If you'd like to arrange a joint meeting, I'd be delighted. That may be premature.
Maybe premature.
Yeah, but my intention is to seek, to engage a consulting engineering firm that has the expertise as well in applying for grants, that they know where the money is and know we get done. And I think where we're at right now is that if we at least have a meeting of the minds that this is something we ought to pursue, then there's a couple of steps we can take immediately, immediately over the next months or six weeks. And if it seems to make sense, then I think we begin to identify sources and what the best techniques are, if you will, to apply for those sources. It can get very complex. I'm just filling out an application for a historic sign on the village building, which was the old Nelsonville Fishing Fur Club. And it is on the National Registry. Well, I was going blind on the application for a $200 sign, you know. So I have a realistic view of the complexities, who'll no doubt meet, I think. And any other questions you'd like to ask? Okay, again, thank you for your courtesy of having me here and your patience in putting off with my long-windedness.
Thank you for the courtesy.
Glad you had some fun with us.
Good luck with it.
My pleasure.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the winter parking legal notice. This is a notice which occurs every year. It says, beginning November 15th and continuing through April 15th, seasonal parkings restrictions will take effect pursuant to sections, blah, blah, blah. These restrictions prohibit all overnight parking between the hours of 12:01 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. The village board has agreed to a call-in program as an optional method of seasonal parking control. And the snow line is identified. A call-in is intended to limit the need for off-street parking to situations when there are snow emergencies. Towing may be required. Additional areas provided for seasonal off-street parking, Campbell Avenue, South of the Boulevard, south side of Gold Garden, south side of New Street adjacent to the book club entrance, and the west side of Fair Street at Mayor's Park. The municipal parking lot on Fair Street is available for winter parking between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. Signs will mark designated areas. In addition, pursuant to Village Code Section 108-21, the owner and occupant of each and every building and lot in the village shall at all times keep at least a three-foot width of sidewalk in front of the respective houses, buildings, and lots free of snow and ice. When ice on said walk cannot be removed, it shall be covered with sand and other materials not detrimental to the concrete such as calcium chloride in such a manner as will enable persons to walk thereon with safety. Rock, salt, or salt-based materials are strongly discouraged. Sidewalks in front of commercial establishments and commercial parking lots shall be kept free of snow and ice at all times between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. All other village sidewalks must be cleared within 18 hours after the end of a storm. Summonesses will be issued to violators. I make a motion to approve the winter parking legal notice.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Next. Consider Resolution Number 25-2018, re-winter parking on Marion Avenue. Marion Ave, this is again something that occurs once a year. Resolution 25, there's 2018, suspension of on-street parking on Marion Avenue. Whereas the village of Cold Spring has on-street parking regulations which limit or prohibit on-street parking at certain times and locations. And whereas the village of Cold Spring conducts snow clearing on its streets during winter months. And whereas snow clearing activity in the vicinity of Marion Avenue and Benedict Road could be better conducted and coordinated with local residents if the village's on-street parking regulations are suspended on the dead-end portion of Marion Avenue, south of Benedict Road to allow parked vehicles to remain thereon. And now therefore be it resolved as follows. The village board of the village of Cold Spring hereby suspends on-street parking regulations for the dead-end portion of Marion Avenue, south of Benedict Road from November 15th, 2018 until April 15th, 2019. A copy of this resolution shall be posted at village hall and provided to the village police department forthwith. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 25-2018.
All second.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor? Sorry, it's a roll call group.
Yep. Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Valoda?
Yes.
And the mayor is absent.
So we've got that adopted. Thank you, Michael. Next. Authorize the mayor to sign a three-year agreement with Wheel Obrator. And I'm assuming I'm going to take this to be authorize deputy mayor to sign a three-year agreement with Wheel Obrator. There's a waste disposal agreement between Wheel Obrator Westchester and the village of Cold Spring. The village of Cold Spring hauls its garbage to Wheel Obrator, located at Charles Point, Peekskill, New York. The agreement with Wheel Obrator identifies the terms of payment, the starting date and the ending date of the agreement. The agreement is three pages, small font. I'm doing us all a major service by not reading. This is, I believe, the standard agreement that we signed with Wheel Obrator. What is of, to me, interest is the rate. The rate went up this month, if I remember correctly. The new rate, which goes into effect November 2018, is $84.50 a ton, November 19th. November 2019, it will be $87 a ton. And November 2020, it will become $89.50 a ton. So I would like to make a motion to authorize me to sign the three-year agreement with Wheel Obrator.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next. Aaron Wolf, who presented to us about two weeks ago, was it?
Yeah, three.
Three weeks ago on a recommendation from the ZBA for a public hearing sign recommendation. And I thought he would be here tonight. He's not. Some of the questions he was asked at the time was, do all boards approve this? And he doesn't say that in his, in his new write-up. Does anyone know the answer to that?
I have no idea. I just got this electronically late today, I think.
Pardon me?
Didn't we just get this late today?
Yesterday.
Well, in section two, he's got planning, question mark, other boards, question mark.
Well, section two identifies what chapters talk about public hearing notices.
Right, but he only, he's got HCRV and ZBA, but he doesn't have planning.
Yeah, the question is, do they support this? Not what are the chapters in the village code.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Can we table this?
Yeah, I thought he was going to determine that.
Because I have not had a chance to really look at it.
I thought he was going to determine that as well. That's what we decided.
Okay, so we'll table this? Very good. The next topic involved John Shearer, who is not here. So are you representing him?
Well, I just, well, I'd like to know, do you know what the total cost was? The total cost from the charge Knights of Columbus were?
So he's taking issue with the cost that was levied on the Knights of Columbus at $38 an hour for the police presence. And he wants it to be less than that.
Do you know what, was there a total cost that he gave the Knights of Columbus?
I'm sorry.
Do you know what the total cost was for the event? It's $1,140. You mean for the police? Yeah. Yeah, it's $1,140. Okay. At least I didn't, you know, I had no idea.
It's $38 an hour. And there were two officers on board for each day.
Mm-hmm.
I guess this has to be tabled until...
Yeah, no, I can't represent.
Yeah, I don't know. I think, I mean, do we, can we decide?
He knew this, going into this, there was going to be costs, right?
Can we just vote whether or not we want to lower it?
Oh, certainly we can, yes. Okay. So Fran, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do not lower the cost. This is the cost that it is now for our police officers. It's a total of 30 hours at $38 an hour, my, yes. $1,140, and I think that's a set fee. So I make a motion that we don't make any change in it.
Okay. I'll second that.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. To last...
Excuse me. So then, since you made a motion, it wasn't tabled.
It was not tabled. It was...
Thank you.
We, the board agreed not to...
You took action.
Yes. We're an action board. Last topic, approval of bills.
Okay, I'm up. I make a motion to approve batch number 4816 in the amount of $60,611.82.
Anyone second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, Fran gave me, was going to give me money if I could get this done, this meeting done by eight o'clock so she could get home to watch the Red Sox lose. I wasn't able to achieve that goal.
That means I'm going to win. So even better.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, public comment. Thank you, Lynn, thank you. Any comments? I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Bottom of the first, Red Sox won to nothing.
Lynn to be joining us, and Dave will not be here tonight. The first topic on the agenda is discussion on the proposed wine and food festival at Mayor's Park in August of 2019. And there was an email from Lauren on Monday saying, answering some of the questions. And Lauren says that we usually have 1,000 people over the two days, but obviously we'd love to have more. We always use the services of the New York State Police. And we also reach out to the Putnam County Sheriff Department for checks on traffic, et cetera, I'll link. Besides using the local state police and the sheriffs, we also use Hudson Valley Professional Security Services. I'm not sure who or what they are, but I would think... When you say you use the services, do you have people, do you have state police that are there from when it starts until when it ends?
Yes, it is. The security component I provide, we usually...
I'm sorry. The first question was the state police.
Yes, you have the state police there.
Okay, and they are there from when you start until when you...
Not always. They're mostly there, they come and go. They're there like throughout the day.
Okay, and the Putnam County Sheriff?
They're there most of the day.
They're there most of the day.
Yes.
But do you have a commitment from either one of those two?
I usually have a commitment from the state police, which...
Except that you don't have a commitment for the whole day. You have a commitment for...
Yes.
To check in on you.
Check in.
Okay, I think we're going to have to check with our local police to see whether or not the, what you have, the agreements that you have with the New York State Police and the Putnam County Sheriff is sufficient. I think that we would much prefer that our police handle the security there because they would be there the entire day with one or more people.
Okay.
Now, you would be responsible for paying their salary, which is billed at the rate of $38 an hour.
Okay.
And I would ask our police how many people, how many police officers they need for the event.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a quick question because they hire six, usually have six security from Hudson Valley Security. So we need them then if the police department will be handling that?
Well, the police department manage the traffic.
Okay.
And I suspect the Hudson Valley Professional Security Services...
They handle inside.
Handle inside, yes, but...
And sometimes traffic too, as well.
I don't know that they are qualified or certified to handle traffic on a village street or...
Oh, no, not the village street, no.
Because you have got the village street in front of you. So I would think that we would have to check this out with our police. Okay, and your third answer, with CRP sanitation, provide supportive potties and the dumpster for your... I'm assuming the dumpster is within the area?
Yes.
Okay. And you said you'd love to receive local businesses' support to market the village. That is something you would have to...
Yeah, exactly, that's true, that is.
So you had some questions. Does the park have electricity? The answer to that is yes. Does it have Wi-Fi? I think the answer to that is no.
You said nothing is aware of?
Right. Does the pavilion have a kitchen? No. And what we're talking about is not the pavilion. We're just talking about Mayor's Park. So the area that's within the chainline fence?
Okay.
Okay, that's Mayor's Park. The area to the north of that, the pavilion, could be rented out separately that day to another organization.
Okay.
Jack?
I thought that the application was for both.
For both, that's what...
I believe that it actually was for both.
I see, yes. It is for both.
If I could, the preparation commission didn't meet when we were reviewing this and we're updating our application. You'll see that we now added that if somebody wanted to use the facility for Mayor's Park and the pavilion, if I think it's on page four, you'll see that we added a line on how much it would cost in addition to use the pavilion along with Mayor's Park.
This is something new?
Yes, because we reviewed, we have reviewed this since the last, your last meeting to kind of address some of those things that came up with this new application.
I don't have it in my materials here, but obviously you have something.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I could not get it done until it was...
Yeah, and we'll review it probably separate. We'll probably review it separately and then...
Right.
And not to know.
Knowing that that was on and that's something that was new, we address that in our application by charging an additional fee for the use of the pavilion if you're using Mayor's Park.
Okay.
Where is the electricity in the park?
It's by the, being a first by the dugout there.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you know, that's powered, but it's up to you to get the power in that box wherever you need it else.
Yeah, you just can't walk...
It's just an outlet. Just an outlet, yep.
Now, isn't there some that's on the far side closer to the river?
Yeah, I don't know about that.
I had always assumed since there's a pole there, a light pole there, that there might be...
We never use it at Knights of Columbus. We never went over there to...
Now, you had a light...
We would have liked to know if there's a power over there. And I don't think there is either, but I never really looked.
And, okay. Further, Lauren, you say that you will need to set up on Friday, August 9th?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that you're going to be taking down on Monday?
Yes.
Okay. You need Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday?
Part of Monday.
Okay, the parts of Friday.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for answering those questions. Comments from the board?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Why do you want to move it to Cold Spring, from Patterson?
Because I spoke, a lot of the wineries, they're the ones that suggested Cold Springs because they said they liked the action here. It's more tourist-related to what they want and the attractions, so...
How many years has it been in Patterson?
It's going to be at Patterson four years.
Okay, and where was it before that?
It was in Carmel.
Okay. And would you, what do you charge for vendor fees?
Usually charged for both days, arts and craft $150 and inside, the tent is $250 because I supply them with the chairs and tables.
So who goes inside the tent? Is that the one of these?
Anyone who wants to wineries. Most of the wineries, spirits and ciders are inside. But a lot of the arts and craft and the commercial vendors also wants to be inside because they feel that's where the action is, so they want to be...
How big is the tent you rent?
I usually...
Huh? How big is the tent?
I usually get a 60 by 130 for the inside tent.
You say in here, I would love to receive local businesses' support to market the village and also be able to have more job opportunities. What does that mean?
Okay, I know. Okay. I would like to get the, as far as the restaurants that surround here. So I would like to have them to, you know, the cooking demonstrations to get more involved. Perhaps also have a booth there to sell their food. The hotels to possibly give away, have some giveaways and be advertised at the festival. And of course, I would be able to hire more people to assist with the festival. And I'd like to use the local people.
So basically, you want, you're thinking that local food-oriented businesses would pay an additional vendor fee
Not additional.
to set up at the Wine and Food Festival?
Well, the food, okay, the food vendors pay $350. 10 by 10 now, yes. So they would pay that. But we also would have, if they're going to be doing a cooking demonstration, then they would pay. I would have to speak to them directly and offer them various... I'm sorry, my throat.
So you're thinking of giving, let's say, Lynn Bouchon wants to do a cooking demonstration, you would discount their booth fee?
Yes, or give it to them.
If they were to be offering...
I would give it to them for free.
Okay.
Will they be able to sell food there?
Yes. I'm sorry, my throat is...
Do you want to go get some water?
No.
There's a water...
No, that's...
So I know this is early, but I just want to put a bug in your ear that that time of... That time of year, actually, it's rather slow for Main Street. Let's see, yeah, the middle of August is slower because a lot of people are away on vacation. It might be a boon. The other thing I was kind of concerned about is the proximity in time to, as far as scheduling this event, to the Hudson Valley Wine and Food Fest that happens at Ryne Beck.
The Hudson Valley Wine and Food Fest is a month away. I work, I also work with that festival as well. They're a month away, so...
You don't think that that would draw attention away from...
Not really, because I haven't had any progress with that before. Yeah. Because mine isn't as big as theirs because they have like over 100 wineries. So when you keep it small and mostly intimate, you...
Do you, who collects the licenses from all the wineries and the beer companies that are setting up in there?
I do, they have to have, yeah, they have a farmer's market license in New York State.
For wine and beer? Do they give alcohol and liquor?
Yes. They don't sell it by the, by the glass or just by the bottle or the case if you want to purchase it. They just do samples. They have to have license. And I also get the, the New York State Agriculture Farmer's Market License so they're, they're able to sell by the bottle.
So you're responsible to make sure everybody has their...
Yes, we have to get all the permits.
And you, you will provide us with the insurance?
Yes, they give us insurance liability and you will be named as additional insured.
Now, they will give it to, or should we? I sort of think that we need to get that from you and not from each one individually.
Yeah, they send it to me, but also tell them to make you as additional insured, so I'll give you, give you that copy as well.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Yeah, we do, that just means you're...
One individually, yeah.
That just means you're just written on the policy, you know, as additionally insured.
Right, but I, I usually will get it from the, from the overall vendor, not the individual ones. I mean, that means we could probably be getting a hundred different licenses, right? Or insurance policies.
Insurance, yes.
Don't we typically get one insurance policy from the vendor who is running the, the festival?
Well, I do, I, I will be given your liability insurance.
Okay, you'll be getting this one, okay. When, when do you have to start trying to get your vendors for this?
I usually start like next week. Sponsorship and everything else, yes.
Lauren, there's a, a new procedure that we just received tonight.
Okay.
For events at Mayor's Park and the pavilion. We haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Okay.
And it would be inappropriate for us to read it now and, and go through it. But, um, I would think that providing this to Lauren now, although it's a draft version, would be helpful to her in her planning.
I think so.
Yeah, so that it's, we should write draft across it or something, but just to, understanding that this is a draft and there may be some adjustments to this.
So that's for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for Lauren?
I don't think so.
Ruth Ann, any comments from you?
You know, I just, we've been, you know, the recreation commissions have been working on this for over a year trying to get... So every time something comes out, we kind of try to re-tweak it, so hopefully pretty soon it'll be, you know, a final document. I just wanted to call your attention that we did make some changes as we discussed at our last board meeting about making it per day, the fee, because we don't know if something's going to be for one day or two days or three days. You'll see also this, what, what are we going to do with setup days? Because we can't rent the facility during setup days, so that's something that you might want to take a look at between the next time that you do it and adding the additional use of the pavilion. So we just...
Charge them.
Jack?
Just a question of procedure because, and not because of Lauren or anyone else, but just generally, the amount of lead time in trying to organize this and to finance this is, is, is very long. And so with a procedure in progress, is there any date certain that she can count on understanding the framework on which she can go forward? Because she needs to represent what the financial exposure is going to be to her vendor. She needs to know herself what it's going to be and raise the money. And so I understand that it's in progress and it has been, and that's important, but...
Ruth Ann, are the dates that Lauren is talking about, which is August tenth and eleventh, was set up on August ninth and taken on August twelfth? Are those currently available?
They are currently available, yes.
Can we pencil her in, whatever that means?
Yeah, we, we can. I can certainly go to the book now and answer book and pencil it in. It comes up to another thing about how far in advance are we going to book facilities and other questions you're up to answer. I'd be glad to pencil them in on the book.
That would be helpful.
And I would think that maybe by our next meeting we should be able to give a definite, I mean, we'll go through this.
Okay.
And our next meeting is the first week, first Tuesday of November.
Okay. And I think that she can demonstrate that she's making progress here and that these are productive meetings. And if, even if it's penciled in, I think that provides some assurance.
And I, I will reach out to Laurie.
Okay.
Now, on that.
I just, I just have one more question. Who benefits from the proceeds of this? You mentioned donate to charities, but is this, is the intention of this to donate to charities or is it a...
Part proceeds, American Cancer Society this year. I mean, next year will be a designated charity.
Okay, and is there a percentage of the proceeds that goes to them?
We usually give them whatever net proceeds we have. We don't really, you know, like ten percent, twenty percent. And what I've done a lot of times, I give them, okay, we have an affiliate link, an event rights, I give them the promo code and whatever if they sell, sell tickets using that promo code, I give them sixty percent of whatever the sales are.
But we, we would be treating you as a for-profit organization.
Right.
And I think that's important, unlike the Knights of Columbus, which is a specific not-for-profit purpose. This is a for-profit and I assume will be reflected in the rate schedule. But I think it's a, you didn't ask, but I, I think it's a legitimate use as long as the rate schedules reflect the fact that it's a proper name, you know?
Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of how, how it would fall out.
It is not the primary purpose of this. The primary purpose is for-profit, but to provide a forum for the farm table, local farmers, for the local vineyards and local food people to have a public forum. And so it's more economic development than anything else. It's for-profit.
Okay.
Lauren, thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will, thank you. And I will know by the first week to November.
It's our first Tuesday.
I, I talked to Dave about possibly canceling it, meaning it's election day.
Second, second Tuesday.
By the second Tuesday of November, maybe earlier.
Okay, if there's any problem with that, you can contact me. And if you need anything more between now and then, I'm happy to expedite.
I'm sorry, I have one more, one more question.
Yes.
Is, is this going to be a collaborative effort between Lauren's organization and the Chamber or is...
No, not, not formally. As, yeah, the Chamber Board has not voted on this.
I see.
Okay, but the Chamber Board has authorized me to say that they are supporting this.
Gotcha.
As has the Putnam County Chamber. Whether or not in the end we do collaborate, which we would do as a, completely as a not-for-profit, it may end up being a co-sponsorship and we will certainly try to use the Chamber's offices to promote it, to make it a success. But it hasn't gone any further than, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Lauren.
Oh, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the advertising for the Water and Waste Water Superintendent. And Greg has provided us with a write-up for, for advertising. Is, are there specific places that you would advertise? Not in the P C R, for example?
Putting a list together at this point, there, there's several, American Water Association is one that would be able to do something for us virtually for free. They, they deal with, we're members there and they deal with water, waste water systems, small, you know, or size and slightly larger. And then there are some publications, even like A W W A, American Water Works Association. You know, those are the types of things where you need to, this isn't going to, not saying it couldn't be a newspaper thing, it's going to need to be everywhere we can get it to get the best pool of possibility.
Right, right. Is, is there anything that could be done in combination with Putnam County's job postings? I, I don't know that they have anything like this, but just wondering.
I don't either.
On the side, there is another municipality in the area that is advertising for supervisor. Jeff saw it today. He told me and it went right out of my head, I'm sorry.
And is the job description...
I, I didn't, I didn't look at it.
Wasn't sure if we needed to like go that specific in the ad itself or whether you want to refer to it. So I'm just, I don't know how it's going to be precise and what you're going to need. But that's basically the job description more than it is necessarily the, the ad.
Right, right.
So I'm just trying to, you know, take a picture of what, what there is.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think that this would be the ad. This would be something that would be provided to someone who contacted the village.
Right.
Okay.
You need to give enough information so that it kind of weeds out people who aren't anywhere near qualified.
Yes.
So, you know, you need to have some of it in there, but not all of it.
Right, right. So, does the board have any comments on the write-up? Is, what, what would you think our next step to be? To identify those organizations or publications?
Yes.
And come up with a condensed version?
Big line, yeah.
Okay. Is it something that you could do, the condensed version?
I've been trying for a while, but that's what I got for yourself.
This is a condensed version?
You were going to come up...
Feel free.
You were going to come up with...
Every time I write more, I guess it's, it's more.
You can come up with a list of...
Happy to help.
You can come up with a list of publications where, where we need to advertise.
What are you thinking, like three lines or something, four lines?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Like that brief, congratulations. No problem.
Yeah.
You got it right.
I'll take care of that.
I, I would think that you would be looking for, the Village of Cold Spring is looking for population, number of gallons of...
Listing out these specific license numbers tells an operator what it is. The grade two A water is in something, you know, so you don't have to get into that much, you know, specific on it.
Okay. So you're going to come up with the publications that it would be listed in? And who's going to come up with the shorter one?
I.
Steve.
In the, I guess Jeff will place it. We need to get moving on this, we could just take months and months and months. And then Greg can't retire.
You're right, I could just see him hanging around waiting for us to publish. Hmm? I don't think so.
So we need a, a motion.
Pardon me?
We need a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to, to approve advertising for the Water and Waste Water Superintendent position?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Next up, Bill.
Evening trustees, on behalf of the Village of Nelsonville, I'd like to thank Mayor Morandi and the, and the board for having me here this evening.
Excuse me, could I ask that you sit at the table there? Otherwise, anyone watching is going to have whiplash.
Who wouldn't want?
Thank you very much.
My pleasure, Jim. I didn't wear makeup this evening. In, in any event, I'm sure most of you know that the Village of Nelsonville does not have a sanitary sewer system. There is one example of a sewer system, which is a subject, as your attorneys know, in litigation, of a private sewer system connecting to Cold Spring on Pearl Street. Excuse me. At this stage, we are in the very early stages of exploring what we would need to do in order to build and maintain a sanitary system for the village. Now, to put this into context, and I'm, I'm glad Superintendent Phillips is here this evening because he can add FOMO texture, I think, than can I. Back in the late nineteen sixties, I believe it was the Summer of Love in nineteen sixty-nine, there was a plan put together, an engineering plan, to construct a sewer system in Nelsonville. In that case, there are two versions. One would be a system that would handle the core village, if you will. And the outlying areas would not be part of that plan. The second plan would be to incorporate those, those areas outlying, outliers in the village. At that stage, the cost was estimated at about eight hundred thousand dollars, which in twenty eighteen terms is about four and a half of the five million dollars. The plan itself was occurring at the time that Cold Spring was building its treatment plant for the village here. And that treatment plant was intended to accommodate the Village of Nelsonville as well. I believe, and Superintendent Phillips can comment on that, that there is likely to be capacity today if a sewer system were built in the treatment plant to accommodate that. Ie, if we were to connect to the sewer system in Cold Spring, the treatment plant would be able to accommodate the, the volume coming from the village. Now, we're, we're very early on in contemplation of this, as you can imagine. It's quite a formidable task. I've had an engineering firm review the plans that were originally devised in the late nineteen sixties. Their estimate is about seven million dollars to complete the plan for the core village. The outlying areas are probably adequately served by septic systems. They're generally several acres of property. There's sufficient spacing that it almost becomes a non-village location. However, at this stage, I wanted to give a heads up to Cold Spring, also to have Cold Spring discuss in conjunction with Superintendent Phillips what the implications would be. Your answer may be, we're not interested in, in allowing a hookup to the treatment plant or we're unable to, to do that. There is an advantage that I'd like to point out. If indeed there is a contemplation of infrastructure changes within the village here, that there is good grant money available. For example, right now, the Village of Hyde Park is installing a sanitary septic system at a cost of eighteen million dollars. That's going to be largely subsidized by state funding. There's also funding available from, for the federal government as well. All of those areas we will explore. But focusing on state funding, if there is something undertaken, if you will, where two municipalities cooperate, the pool of funding enlives significantly. Therefore, if indeed there is a need on the part of the Village of Cold Spring to make infrastructure changes and there is a way that we could coordinate, you know, obviously I would require, I think it would be wise for me to have a referendum if we decide to move forward on a plan for Nelsonville. However, assuming, and that's a large assumption, that that, that referendum endorsed the plan to install a system. And if indeed Cold Spring sees a need to undertake some infrastructure improvements here, then we could apply co- or jointly. Obviously, it wouldn't be fifty-fifty. The allocation of funding, which would, would have to be determined in a, an objective way, if you will. We would both get access to more money than we would be able to gain individually. Now, where we are at this point, I'm interviewing, or the board is interviewing, two consultants. Both of them have come highly recommended to provide us with a more detailed analysis of what we would need to do to accomplish the... of what we would need to do to accomplish, uh, the construction of a, a septic system within the Village of Nelsonville. I'm sure many will be shocked to learn that the environmental oversight, uh, has vastly changed since the late nineteen sixties. So therefore, many components of the plan, uh, that I, if the, if the board would like to have a copy of that plan, it would be delighted to provide it. Many components of that plan are obsolete, frankly. But, uh, the, the engineers have looked at it, they've, they've given us a number on this one. Uh, I need to explore, uh, uh, I think we would obtain two million dollars in funding, but was still left with, uh, a five million dollar cost for, for a small village. Uh, there is, uh, long-term funding available, a low rate, uh, low interest, long-term, thirty-seven year, uh, ten-year, that we could, uh, qualify for, uh, the Village of Nelsonville. But that would still come down to about two hundred thousand a year to repay that loan. And that's approximately two-thirds of our current budget, so it's not inconsequential. So, uh, at this stage, uh, uh, we are going to proceed ahead to, uh, to take it to its, its next level, to get a more refined view of what would need to be done and, uh, how much that would cost. Uh, I would like to get a feedback from the Village of Cold Spring, uh, whether there is that ability to connect. You know, obviously the engineers would have to be involved in that as well. And whether there is indeed an opportunity if infrastructure improvements are needed within the Village of Cold Spring, whether we could come up with a common approach, uh, to accomplish them and obtain funding. Uh, the final word is, we used to call this in Washington DC, Potomac Fever. Uh, we're, a few days before end election, and, uh, I have been dialing for dollars, but, uh, elected officials right now are somewhat distracted and, uh, in my conversations have, uh, uh, been pointed towards, let's wait till the elections are completed and sit down and discuss what we can do. I, I can tell you with some degree of confidence that the, the county and, uh, the state have been very supportive. And, uh, uh, there are multiple sources of, of funding of which I am, uh, as yet not fully, uh, conversant with. But, uh, there's money out there, it's a real need. I think it is an economic development need as well for the Village of Nelsonville. We see economic opportunities which are impeded by the lack of a sewer system, I believe, as well. Although this is not an issue here, but I'll just mention it for the, uh, the sake of full context. The fact that dense housing is using optimistically septic systems detracts from the value of those homes. So I can tell you from firsthand experience that a homeowner, uh, if the homeowner decides to sell within the village, takes a substantial hit in the value because an engineer worth his salt is going to, uh, have problems with the septic system in dense, uh, concentration. Now, many, uh, citizens of my community I've spoken to have told me, well, I take care of my septic system. And I say, well, that's not the problem, it's the guy next door. That if everyone is not maintaining their septic, uh, there's a potential disaster there. And, uh, since there are no barriers to air currents, uh, any, uh, problems within the Village of Nelsonville may waft west, much to the detriment of the citizens here. So, uh, that's where we are. I'd like to get you the plans. Uh, I would also point out, I had a conversation with, uh, Colonel at West Point, who is, I'm going to his retirement party this, this week, he was head of the engineering department. And he was going to have the cadets undertake the, uh, the engineering study, since the Army does have to build, uh, treatment facilities as well. However, the new head of engineering at, uh, uh, West Point was a, is a wonderful guy, but he's got other plans for the, the core cadets, the engineers at this point. Building railroads, West was not among them, but, uh, so that's where we are, we're delighted to take any questions from you.
Now, uh, I would like to get, you said that you have a copy of the plan?
Yes.
Could you...
Not with me, but I will...
Can you give it to the village office or something?
I will give it to Jeff, uh, this week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I'll take care of it, I'll get it home tomorrow.
Great, great.
Yeah.
Um, I, I will speak out of turn in place of Greg. I remember when the sewer system went in, um, it was in the family, so to speak.
Yes, indeed.
And at the time, yes, the sewer system was expected to have, sorry, the sewage disposal plant was expected at that time to have the capacity to handle, to handle the Village of Cold Spring,
Right.
such as it was built out at that time.
Right.
And the Village of Nelsonville, as it was built out at that time.
Right.
We both know that things have changed, additional construction, et cetera. So I would think that some evaluation...
Yes, that would be key.
...in terms of capacity.
Indeed, indeed.
I, I think that's what we're, does that sound reasonable, Greg?
Yeah, the, I mean, the approximate maximum flow design of the plant was a half million gallons a day is maximum. Last thirty months, I just drew some numbers together today. Over the last thirty months, our average was about, uh, zero point two two million gallons per day. So we're, you know, roughly in less than half of what that designed, but that was max design. Uh, and as I spoke to Mayor O'Neil about it briefly, uh, a month or so ago, the, the idea of it is, is appealing. And, and one of the things about construction now is it's all gonna be watertight, so we don't have eye-on-eye issues. It's gonna be pure flow and it's not gonna be issues that we have in an older system. So, you know, that part of it, you know, did, just makes it a more efficient, uh, flow coming in of what would be here. We wouldn't have to worry about excess, uh, unwanted flows, so, so that is good. Not to say that what we have down there wouldn't need tertiary treatment or another clarifier or something along those lines, which then the question would be, that's really not to improve our system, it's really to take any extra flow. So, I don't know where you get to a point of, we need our engineers to look at it. Would we be taking care of that, you know, in other words? So we need to be very clear on what you, your engineers think you're going to need.
Mm-hmm.
Flows, you know, all those types of things.
Exactly.
Uh, so that it can be looked at and then decided, you know? But I think it's, I think it's a good idea with a summer like this, with the rain we've had, I'm surprised you don't have major issues up there with the, the house, you know, stuck together.
Uh, thank God. Uh, the, uh, I, I, I think it makes sense and that there be a, an objective evaluation by a, a well-known. You would need to meet the same engineers, we're, we're going to be comfortable, that these are folks you would have competence in. But I think going in, frankly, uh, we have to have a rigorous understanding that there must be equitable apportionment of, of the cost. So if there are added costs, uh, to the treatment plant as a result of, of connection by the Village of Nelsonville, we should pay for that, okay? So there's no, uh, no, uh, you know, I think all of that has to be, the tires have to be kicked on that upfront. And this is not gonna happen in six months, Greg. I, I frankly, I'll be in the ground.
We'll be looking out in the open, I should say.
But, uh, uh, but, you know, in a, in a, uh, 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 it's the spirit of cooperation here, if there are issues that Cold Spring needs to address, uh, as well, then again, I think a joint approach makes sense since the trough into which one may insert one's snout becomes substantially larger. So, so, uh, I will give Cold Spring a prize of what we are doing. I have board support, uh, this year, uh, which is a new, new development, uh, people within the village who don't carry the same, uh, you know, histories, if you will, that others, older folks like me, you know, within the village may have. Do see a need to, to take an enlightened view here, uh, to accomplish something for the benefit of the citizens of, of Nelsonville. And also for economic development as well. As many of you know, for example, the Alan Cole properties up there and whatnot, uh, I can tell you, we're working very hard, uh, also in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, New York State Department of Transportation, and, uh, to address those issues. One of the restrictions, if you will, is that the new owner, Frost, uh, has expressed, uh, a view he wants to improve those properties and, and has moved towards that. The current situation, uh, that's sort of a gateway to the community here, is horrible, the way that looks up there and whatnot. Uh, the DOT is gonna be coming through with the plan. But I'm sorry to be long with it, he'd like to do something with that property, which I think is a benefit to all of us, adding to the attractiveness of, of this community. However, he is restricted as well, but, you know, does somebody's gonna install a septic system, uh, you know, it just, that dog won't hunt. So, uh, any other questions, I'd be delighted to take.
Are you considering a water supply also?
I think we should, frankly, I, I wanted to keep it separate, but yeah, you...
At this time, right?
I think it would be, I mean, may I be blunt?
Please.
Yes, uh, three oh one was dug up, uh, I forget how many years ago. That was a perfect opportunity to install, uh, much of what we needed, certainly for the Village of Nelsonville. It didn't happen, if, if you will. But I think, yeah, the water supply, the bulk of the village, and again, the outliers, use, uh, well water, which is perfectly...